Okay, I got seven o'clock. Call this meeting of the Cottage Grove City Council to order. May we please have the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Counselor Stenit? Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Solisby?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Mayor Gow.
Okay, we don't have any items to be added to the agenda. So, item four, appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizen comments on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. So I do have one person signed up for public comment, that's Dwayne Toddie. Is he online?
I am here tonight.
Okay. Great, okay, you have five minutes.
(Inaudible) 77561, Highway 99. I'm incorporated. I wanted to speak today on the sidewalk order that the city council voted unanimously last meeting to enforce or enact and enforce on the residents on Taylor. I have sent out three emails, two which show sidewalks that are out of code, cities. They show that you guys are using to enforce this order. One is in front of City Hall, and it is still there, and another one that I sent today is in front of the old Bank of America building, which is worse than the one in front of City Hall. I have sent the emails to every single city council and the mayor. I have only received one response to the first email regarding the sidewalk in front of City Hall from Counselor Savage and Counselor Irvin, and I appreciate that, and Counselor Roberts has spoken to me in person. I have received zero response, zero, from the mayor, from any other city council regarding any of the other three emails. That's very unprofessional, in my opinion. These were professional emails. There was no attacking going on. I don't know why you guys can't take the time to answer those emails. I'm sure I'll find out. I urge you tonight to revisit the situation, and I urge the council to overturn their decision to force this order upon those people for the reasons that I stated, and I don't have time in this five minutes to state them, but I did send it out and post it online, pretty lengthy, for reasons why, including the Richard Myers, city manager's, address to the budget committee regarding unknown times that we're in and what the future holds, the fact that the city property, there are city properties that are also out of compliance, and multiple properties around the city that are out of compliance. So I would urge you guys to revisit that, and maybe take another vote and overturn that. Let's see, I wanted to talk about uploaded videos to YouTube. I was putting, before the city manager started publishing the city council meetings to YouTube for people to review at a later time, people that can't be here tonight, I was sending in public records requests. Public records requests are timely. They require the city manager's assistant to respond to me, one, and also to provide me with the link to the city server so that I can watch these videos and I download them. I can literally take this video for your information, and I can upload this video to YouTube in a matter of 30 minutes. That's what it takes me to take it from the city server and put it on YouTube. The last city council meeting that's listed on YouTube is September 13th. Public records requests, like I said, are timely, and I don't want to waste my time, and I don't want you guys wasting your time to provide me with these city council meetings that I can't be in attendance to. I would urge you to get those uploaded in a timely manner. Like I said, the last one was September 13th. The September 27th city council meeting should, I would receive it today. Five business days for response, 15 business days to receive it. I would have received it today. It is still not uploaded on YouTube. There's no excuse. The residents deserve to be able to watch these city council meetings if they are at work or out of town. And then I wanted to talk about, one more thing, real quick, if I got another minute. Well, I think I mentioned that, no response to my email. But anyways, I really urge you, if you do nothing else tonight, but focus on that sidewalk order. This is scary. I've read an August 2019 letter that was issued to these residents that are in this Taylor Avenue order, and the email makes it sound like they were included. Now, this was August of 2019, and I knew things changed, I know things changed, but it's important for you guys to consider all of this, that what the residents thought was going to happen, and the fact that there are other properties in the same shape or worse around town. And like I said, not creating an order and not enforcing an order does not create liability for the city. So the city, in my opinion, should just back off and let the property owners deal with it. If the property owner has somebody fall on their property, they're going to pay for it. The citizens of Cottage Grove, like I said in my email, that I got no response to, would be better served by being educated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to item five, public hearings. Item A is a public hearing on five-year extension of economic improvements, District EID and Business Improvement District BID. And Fay, or Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Council President Fleck, and good evening, everyone. So the Board of Directors for the EID, the Economic Improvement District and the Business Improvement District, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Sorry, just a moment.
Mr. Stewart, I apologize. As a government administrator of downtown Cottage Grove, I would state a conflict of interest and recuse myself from this matter. Thank you.
I apologize, Counselor Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, thanks. Well, start again. So the Board of Directors for the Economic Improvement District and the Business Improvement District requested council to extend the term of the two districts for five additional years. Council agreed to the request and set the first public hearing for tonight, October 25th, 2021. Council created the two districts in 2001 for a three-year period, subject to extension of the time for additional terms not to exceed five years. The district will expire this year unless extended. The boundaries and assessment for the districts are proposed to be the same with one change. The Business Improvement District assessment will be increased from $50 to $100. Participation is voluntary, but under state statute, the business owner or property owner must remonstrate in writing. Staff has followed the same process as in 2001, 2004, '07, 2010, 2013, and 2016, as required by state statute. Notification. Staff has taken the boundaries of the district and from the county records prepared a mailing list to all of the property owners. We also walked the district to verify the list of the existing businesses. And by August 25th, 2021, the notice of the first public hearing was sent to all property owners and business owners in the district. That notice is attached as appendix A. And in this memorandum, and I'm sorry that it is not attached in this, but it is the most one out, and I can get that for council and post it for you. The mailing of the notice was 30 days prior to the hearing. The term, the proposed term, is for five years and will end in 2026. In order to renew the district and/or change the assessments, another public hearing or notification process would be required at that time. Assessments. The method of assessment for each district is based on the following. The EID, which is the Economic Improvement District, is proposed to be a two-tiered district. Tier one is the property owners will pay five cents for every square foot per year with a maximum of $500 and a minimum of $100. Tier two, the property owners will pay two cents per square foot a year with a maximum of $300 and a minimum of $100. Those assessments in the Economic Improvement District were further amended. If the property was contiguous, only one improvement assessment based on the square footage will be paid. If property is used for only residential purposes, no assessment will be levied. If the property is mixed use and has residential use as part of the assessment, the mixed use assessment, which is the commercial, will be proportionately the share of the EID assessment, and there'll be no assessment for the residential portion. Nonprofit property owners with nonprofit business or activity on the same property will not pay an assessment. For the Business Improvement District is proposing the following assessment. Each business will pay $100 per year. If the property owner and the business owner are the same, they are not part of the Business Improvement District and do not pay the $100 assessment. They only pay the Economic Improvement District assessment. Detailed assessments for property or business will be mailed out with the second public hearing notice and provided to the council at the public hearing. So the process, in accordance with state law, the process is comprised of two steps. There are two public hearings. The first public hearing will be on the ordinance establishing and extending the district and the boundaries. If after the public hearing, the ordinance approving the establishment of the district is approved, then a second public hearing is held on the proposed assessments. The Board of Directors, the property owners and business owners of the districts will continue to elect the seven board member of directors. Four of the directors will be from tier one and three from tier two. The board, not the city, will make decisions on the expenditures of the assessment raised. Remonstrance. In the first public hearing, the notice, public hearing notice, remonstrance procedure was provided. If a property owner or business owner is not in favor of the proposed district, they must remonstrate in writing in order to ensure accurate record recording specifically information is requested to be included in the written remonstrance to the city. There are two separate districts proposed to be extended. Remonstrance from 33% or more of the total assessment value for each district is required to prohibit council from creating the district and collecting the assessments. At the first public hearing, a list of those who have remonstrated and the percentage will be provided. And gee, the agreement between city and districts, the agreement between the districts and the city will continue and is part of the ordinance. Administration fees. The city is not assessed under either the EID or the BID, even though the city owns property in the proposed districts. The city absorbs the cost of the public hearing and notification process and assists with the election of the board members. The districts, and I'm sorry, I thought this map was included in the, after our meeting, shows the districts, the blue is the tier two, and the red, which happens to be downtown area, is tier one. And then there was a placeholder as exhibit B in the ordinance for the assessments, which will be provided at the next public hearing. In regards to to date, written remonstrances that we received, we received 13 for tier one and eight for tier two, for a total of 21, or 124 properties in both tier one and tier total, tier two total, which equates to about 15% of the property owners have remonstrated to date. And there are, we received three written BA, Business Improvement District, remonstrances, and with the ones that are existing property owners in the, in the first assessment for the Economic Improvement District brings the total of folks that have remonstrated out of the Business Improvement District to 11, well under the 33% for both the EI Improvement, Economic Improvement District, and well under for the Business Improvement District. So unless there's any questions before the public hearing, the recommendation is for the council to hold a public hearing.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for the EID. Anybody like to make a comment on the proposed districts? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, so that brings us to item six, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent is adopted. Moves us to item seven, resolutions and ordinances. Item A, first vote of an ordinance extending the Economic Improvement and Business Improvement Districts. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Counselor Fleck. So the council has held the public hearing, and there was no comments at the public hearing in regards to the Economic Improvement and Business Improvement Districts for the extension of five years. I provided the number of remonstrances to date, and they do not exceed 33% of the assessed value of each district. So council pursuant to state statutes and extend the districts, granting first vote is the step, first step in a lengthy process in order to extend the districts. The next step, provided council approves, will be for staff to notify all property and business owners who have not remonstrated of the exact amount of the assessment for their property or business within 30 days prior to the next public hearing. The next public hearing would be scheduled on Monday, December 13th, 2021. Due to the process required by state statute, this ordinance cannot be adopted in one vote. So the recommendation to council this evening is that city council hold the first vote on the ordinance, and upon passage of the first vote, the ordinance shall be brought back to the city council for consideration and a second vote after the second public hearing, which is scheduled, would be scheduled for December 13th, 2021.
Do we have an ordinance number?
3148.
3148.
Okay, do we have a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance 3148?
I make a motion that we vote on the first vote on the ordinance extending the Economic Improvement and Business Improvement Districts.
And do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion with a second to have a first vote for ordinance 3148. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, I know that you just gave these numbers, but can you please repeat the total numbers of businesses and the numbers of folks that remonstrated already? I know that you just said them, I just couldn't write that fast.
I'm sorry. So in tier one, which is the downtown portion of the district, there were 13 property, 13 properties that were requested to be remonstrated out. In tier two, there are eight, for a total of 21. There are less than 21 property owners, but there are several owners that own multiple parcels. There's a total of 124 parcels in both tier one and two combined. So my rough calculations is about 15% of the property owners have remonstrated from it, which is well below the 33% required. And then the Business Improvement District, there were three additional remonstrates in there, bringing the total for the Business Improvement District to 11. And as I shared before, I'm remiss, I don't have the exact number, and we will present that at the next meeting, but there are several more businesses than there are owners in the Economic Improvement District because multiple businesses are in the same building. We have buildings like the Cottage Grove Hotel that has a couple businesses, or the old Stewart property where we got two businesses, so there's several more. So the total number, 11, that's remonstrated, is considerably less than what is below the 33%.
Thank you very much for clarifying the numbers.
Any further discussion? Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, President Fleck. Is it okay to ask a question of Mr. Gilroy?
Well, we had a public hearing on this item, so I would say no.
Okay.
I'm looking to staff, but typically, if we had a, you know, comment on this item not outside of a public hearing, we would allow that, potentially allow that. I don't think because of the public hearing we'd...
Not a problem.
Okay, and I'm seeing some heads nodding. Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, could we call the roll, please?
Counselor Solisby?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Gow.
Okay, so we will bring this one back at our next meeting for a second vote.
John Stenit?
So we are now on item eight, business from the city council. Item A, federal fund exchange agreement. Mr. Bradsky?
Thank you, Council President Fleck. On October 12th, the Oregon Department of Transportation held a webinar on the federal fund exchange program, and was attended by Fay Stewart, excuse me, Mr. Stewart, Public Works and Development Director, and myself. ODOT representatives told us, effective January 1st, 2020, the changes were going to be made. One is that there's a new master agreement that has formed, has been formed. This agreement is not project-specific. It will allow the city to be, what's the right word, basically allow us to be progressive instead of reactive, in that we can use the money, we can request the money ahead of time, and then spend it on projects versus their reimbursement style of the old way that they did it. This master agreement will be good for a three-year limit. As I mentioned, it will go from a reimbursement style to a request funds. And the biggest change I think that's been made besides the master agreement is that the fund exchange rate will change from 94 cents on the dollar to 90 cents on the dollar. And staff, ODOT staff, was recommending that we apply for any balance the city has to take advantage of, excuse me, of the higher exchange rate. Currently, the city does have funds of $132,186 in federal gas tax money. If we, I call it de-federalizing this money by the exchange rate, we will, if we do it before the end of the year, we will receive $124,254.84 for projects. I've attached the agreement for your consideration, and it, as I said, it, excuse me, I went blank, but basically, the agreement is, and we want to take advantage of that higher exchange rate, so staff is recommending, council authorized the city manager to sign the attached master agreement for the federal exchange program. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions of staff? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Fleck. I'm taking it that this agreement is produced, considering it says ODOT recipient agreement number, from ODOT, and it's distributed out to the different municipalities, and it's pretty much non-negotiable. Is that correct? And if that is the case, is this essentially a take it or leave it kind of, kind of agreement? Is this just a formality? Or do we have, if we don't agree to it, I'm guessing we can't say at the higher exchange rate of the existing agreement? Just wondering what our options are here.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, this, this agreement is, it essentially is a take it or leave it, but it was negotiated. I think the League of Oregon Cities worked with ODOT to put this agreement together for all of the cities. So we were represented in the construction and drafting of the agreement through the league.
Counselor Stenit?
So if I understand it correctly, we're basically paying a higher rate for the freedom to, to do the projects the way and in the timeline that we want to do them. And ODOT is asking us to, to take advantage of the rate before they take more of our money. Is that, do I hear that correctly?
I'm not, Counselor Stenit, I'm not sure if that's totally right. Basically, the city, the state gets federal gas tax, and under current ODOT regulations, a percentage gets allocated to cities based on population, and it gets, certain percentage goes to the counties, and then the remainder stays with ODOT. Currently, the city has 18 identified roads or streets in our system that are basically identified as federal aid roads. And what that means, if we have any projects on those 18 roads, we can get a dollar-per-dollar exchange rate. Basically, we, there are requirements to do it to get to dollar-dollar. For instance, we have to put our plans and specifications into ODOT standards, or what they typically do. By, I'm going to, again, use my term, de-federalizing the money, by going through the exchange. The city can use it on any street inside the city limits and do road projects outside of those 18 specific roads. So I guess it's a twofold deal. The other thing I'd like to mention is that usually with the one-on-one, there are additional costs. When you have those federal, we can get the one-on-one exchange because of all the administration, bookkeeping-type stuff that needs to take place to track those federal dollars, kind of like what we've gone through with different grants and those kind of things. Does that answer your question, Counselor Stenit?
Yeah, thank you.
Did I see your hand up again, Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Council President Fleck. I just wondered what would happen if we changed the 90 to 95, send it to them.
I'm guessing they won't sign, they won't sign their portion of the contract.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and put myself in the queue. I railed on this Friday morning myself. I, I think for the fact that ODOT has us over a barrel, and that would, it would be more expensive for us to do it, and it would limit, you know, the scope of the projects we could do, that they're raising this to 10 cents on the dollar for pass-through administrative expenses is just appalling. And I actually would like to know how it is the league ended up endorsing this. I mean, I must be missing something. You know, I don't think that this streamlined process is worth... You know, I don't think that this streamlined process is worth the, you know, additional funds that we're paying, but maybe I'm wrong. I guess I would love to get some background on this from the league, but in any event, are there any other comments from the council on this item? Okay, I guess I would entertain a motion to, well, I guess we, whatever the motion may be, I assume we're going to want to authorize the city manager to sign this master agreement.
I make a motion that we pass federal fund exchange agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion with a second to authorize the city manager to sign the attached master agreement for the fund exchange program. Are there any further comments? Counsel Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just continuing down this thought process, what is our timeline? Say they, say we did change it, they reject it, and then we just have to sign it anyway. Do we lose out? Is there not enough time to get this money before the exchange rate changes? Does anybody know that for sure that they would reject it? Or like, why not fight back a little bit? What jeopardy does that put us in?
Mr. Short.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel Irvin, in the approved budget that we've passed, we have allocated the 124,000-plus dollars in this year's fiscal budget for projects. And those projects, the money would be used to assist in the payment of the chip ceiling that we did on Gateway and also the programmed other street projects such as the digouts and patches in the roads. If we take, for instance, don't pass this and move forward with trying to negotiate on our own, the chances we're going to lose another four cents on the exchange. May not be the end of the world, but it is allocated in the budget. And I'm not, my past experience, I don't think that going through this process is going to, you know, gain anything for the city of Cottage Grove in the end.
Looks like it'd be a little over $5,000. Okay, so any further discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item B, November and December city council meetings. Mr. Myers.
Typically about this time of year, we look at the meeting schedule for council meetings and the holidays and other conferences and things that typically happen during this time of year. This year, none of the conferences conflict because they're either not being held or they've already been held. So looking at the holidays, the upcoming November and December meeting dates, the first meeting in November is fine, and that is earlier in the month. The second meeting is on the 22nd of November, and it is on that week, the Monday before Thanksgiving. And so that's a question if we'll have a complete council or enough the council to participate and have that meeting. We currently only have the judge's evaluation and we've been in touch with the judge and I believe he has said he could do the later date in December or January and have his evaluation then if you wish to do that and move that. I think Trudy talked to him, if that's right, and got that. The December meeting is on the Monday following Christmas. Christmas is on the Saturday. The agenda session would be on Christmas Eve and then the meeting would be on the 27th following the council, the Christmas. So we're recommending right now that probably definitely that we would say, hey, the 27th of December, we'd want to postpone that meeting and just have the first meeting in December. And then the question is, how many would be able to attend the 22nd of November and do we want to have that meeting then or postpone that one? You do have to have one meeting a month pursuant to the charter. That allows you to have the earlier meetings in the month on both of those months.
Okay, what is the will of the council? Counsel Irvin.
Your Counsel President Fleck, in the Friday agenda session, I'd mentioned that I might not be able to make the 22nd. I think I'll be out of town, but there's a good chance I could make it remotely from wherever I am. So I prefer not to do it, but leave it up to everyone else.
Counsel Stenit.
Can we hear the 22nd as well? Did we hear about the mayor on that date?
Did we hear from Mayor, Mr. Myers?
I thought someone else had at least a potential.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my daughter's birthday.
Okay. Can we comfortably evaluate the judge on, say, the 13th of December?
I think that's the date we asked him about and he was okay with it.
The 13th. Well, if that's the item on our agenda, then I would support moving that if we could and canceling the 27th because there's nothing on the agenda.
So it sounds like the consensus is to cancel the November 22 and the December 27 meetings and moving the work session to evaluate the judge to 6 o'clock before the 13th? Does that sound?
Executive session.
Executive session. Does that sound, well, I think we need a motion on that, so if somebody would make a motion in a second, we'll go ahead and adopt that. Counsel Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Fleck. Let me see if I can get this right for a try. I move that we cancel the November 22nd council meeting, that we move the judge's evaluation to executive session 6 o'clock on December 13th, prior to the December 13th council meeting, and that we cancel the December 27th council meeting.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I have a second on that.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like that's the, that's been adopted. So item C, amendment to city manager employment agreements, and I will take over this one for the mayor. So we met an executive session on October 11th, 2021. We held executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the city manager. City manager evaluated, the city council evaluated the city manager and gave him an excellent review. An open session and the council approved the following motion. It was moved by Counsel Fleck and seconded by Counsel Roberts that the city manager received a 4% quota effective July 1st, 2021. The attached agreement to the employment amendment, I'm sorry, the attached amendment to the employment agreement between the city of Cottage Grove and Richard L. Myers amendment reflects the 4% quota effective July 1, 2021 and amends his base yearly salary to $144,799.20. So with that, the city council's recommendation is to approve the agreement of the employment, the amendment to the, boy, I'm having trouble tonight. The city council approved the amendment to the employment agreement between the city of Cottage Grove and Richard L. Myers reflecting an effective date of July 1, 2021. Also, that the city council authorized the mayor or council president to sign the amendment to the employment agreement between the city Cottage Grove and Richard L. Myers. Okay, they finally got that one out. Discussion.
The time's twisted.
Yes.
So you, would you like a motion on that?
If you would like to do so, you bet.
Counsel President, I move that we approve the amendment to the city manager's employment agreement adjusting the city manager's salary to $144,799.20 effective July 1, 2021 in the form attached and to authorize the mayor or council president to sign said amendment.
Okay, that's, that sounds acceptable, yes?
The mayor's going to be signing.
Oh, mayor's going to sign that. Okay, so we'll have the mayor sign that in a second on that.
A second.
We have a second. So is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that brings us to item D, concerns from the city council. Are there any concerns? Counsel Irvin.
Your Counsel President Fleck, just as we're getting into this rainy weather, for my edification and hopefully for the education of everyone else, what is the process, the proper process that you have? A storm drain that is notorious for flooding backing up, would that be a call to Public Works to identify it? How can we be proactive to avoid flooding if possible this year?
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Counsel Fleck. Counsel Irvin, if it's during business hours, I would ask you to call or the citizens call the Public Works office at 942-3349. If it's after hours, I would ask that you would call the after-hours police line and they will contact our on-call individual that would go out and clear that drain.
Okay, anything else from Counsel Roberts?
Thank you, Counsel President Fleck. I have been getting consistent contacts, phone calls and such from residents out at Middlefield Estates about the sloppy work of Spectrums, I guess, working on their, digging up people's yards and not putting things back. I went and talked to the HOA president, John, and he took me for a ride in his golf cart. I've got a ton of pictures on my phone. I have witnessed, there are many service providers over there that have left huge ditches that have not been filled or covered, streets that are damaged, yards that are dug up and bushes and flowers not returned. All they're asking for is for the city to support them in a letter to Spectrum to just do better work. They're not really mad, they just would like to see the city help them in this matter some way. So I have some stuff here, I'll be leaving it with the city.
Okay.
And let them deal with it.
Mr. Myers.
Yeah, if they can get ahold of Jake and he's dealing with Spectrum and our other, our other utilities regularly and he has some contacts where he can get that information. But yeah, it is going to be tied to the homeowners association, but yeah, we'll support them and, and help them in that any way we can because they're still under the franchise as well.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Counsel President.
Any other concerns? Mr. Stenit.
I suppose I'd restate a concern that I mentioned Friday morning. Someone who frequents the community center about folks hanging out in front of there and in some cases staying out in front of the building. This person was concerned about, you know, the, the presence of those folks being deterrent for those who would use the community center, particularly young people. He's a compassionate person who knows that there's no easy answer to that question. And I know we had quite a discussion on Friday and I don't know if we want to do that now, but it is, it is something that, that needs to be discussed and is not going to go away.
Thank you. Any other concerns of the council?
Can I? Thank you. I'd like to say something. I'd like to apologize publicly here to John Stenit for when we had, we discussed the EBID and EBIT. I had just come back from a 10-hour drive, which is really no excuse, and I gave a no-vote without any explanation. And I have since talked to members of the group and to John, and I just want to apologize. That was not, I voted for the wrong reasons and I want to apologize to you publicly because I really want to be able to work with you on some of the projects you'll have coming in the future, so I'm sorry.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, I have a couple items. Real quick, about the sidewalks, city staff actually looked into the history of the ordinances and they go back to, gosh, I can't remember the number, I think it was 1964, if I remember right, was the last time we could actually find a change, but that change just says we've changed everything that happened before. And so we don't actually know when the sidewalk ordinance actually went into place, but as we looked in the Friday agenda or Friday update last week, it indicated that this actually goes back to the turn of the previous century, so, and case law. So I guess just to give a little bit of history that that has been on the books for many, many years. And I guess at this point, I certainly would welcome any conversations around changing it, but those conversations would have to also include a way that we're going to actually pay for improving infrastructure in our city. We already have huge, huge short dollars for all of our infrastructure. Streets right there along with the sidewalks would, you know, the sidewalks would then be in the same situation in our streets as not having any funding for replacement. So while I don't think it's necessarily a perfect model for how to get your improvements done, I do not have any other alternatives at this time. I certainly would welcome citizens to offer some ways of providing the funds necessary for us to fix sidewalks. At this point, that this is the way it is and, but I guess I'm, I'm open to those conversations. The city also, and I think we said this in our last meeting, does not have the money to put liens on property and do the work. I look at this actually as a plus on a negative, and I don't think that came out very well. This is a mechanism where the city can offer low-interest funding for somebody to be able to do the improvements that they may not be able to afford at the time. And so by leaning the property, the city is then, you know, out that money. We could not do this citywide for every sidewalk that needs to be replaced. And so we need to prioritize the projects in our city. And so I believe staff is working on that and maybe Mr. Myers can touch on that in his report. But we are going to look at the sidewalks in the city. We're going to look at what we need to do on a priority basis so that we don't have injuries like we did in the previous situation. And so I'm going to stop there by just saying that, boy, I get it. In fact, you know, I'm likely to have to replace mine at some point in the future and so I do not, I totally understand people's concerns, but without a viable alternative, I'm not sure what the answer is. And so item two for me is, I have reported this Friday morning and I'd like to do it again. I received an email about our Public Works folks and I'd like to read it real quick. It says, "This email is directed to all the city councilors, city council members, but since I know Mike and happen to have his email, I'm directing it to him and hoping that he will share it with the other council members. I'd like to recognize and thank Fay Stewart for responding to an issue I had recently had with a horrendous noise that was coming from the treatment plant, which is right across the river from my property. My husband and I have peacefully coexisted with the plant for many years, recognizing that occasionally it's going to generate noises or smells that we don't particularly like because it is, after all, a wastewater treatment plant. However, a couple of months ago, we noticed a new noise. It sounded a lot like the noise an engine makes when the bearings are going, or the screeching noise that a failing clutch generates, and it went on 24/7. It completely destroyed our peace and quiet. If you've ever experienced a monotonous, high-pitched squealing noise that never stops, you'll know how obnoxious it can be. I figured eventually someone would hear it and fix it or replace whatever was causing it, but after several weeks with no relief, I finally decided I needed to alert the Public Works Director to the problem. Frankly, I didn't expect a response, no reflection, no reflection on Mr. Stewart, but I just figured that my email would be ignored and I would have to inch my way up the bureaucratic ladder in order to find somebody who would fix the problem. Imagine my surprise and delight when Mr. Stewart responded to my email within 24 hours, notifying me that the, the plant staff had found the problem, which was a loose belt, and fixed it. I had noticed the change immediately when it happened. There was an initial horrendous screech, but then miraculously, then miraculously, there was no more noise. I thanked Mr. Stewart, but I wanted to make sure that his superiors were aware of his quick and effective response. Too often, we tend to criticize and complain about our government officials without thanking them when they do something positive for us. I wanted to let you know how pleased... I wanted to let you know how pleased and relieved I am with Mr. Stewart's prompt action. I can once again enjoy quiet afternoons and evenings without the, without the banshee from across the river. And so, I just wanted to share that with you guys because I, I just am so pleased with, with our city staff and, and as a whole and particularly Mr. Stewart, and I just wanted to make sure I shared that. So, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, Council Urban?
You council president Fleck, well, to, to piggyback on the, the conversation about the sidewalks in response to you, Mr. Fleck, in reflection on the issue at hand, how it originated and the actions and everything, like, one of the, the things that I'm, I'm looking at is that there was just a, there was misunderstandings and misconceptions present from, um, from the initial complaint and as it came out in the, in the public sphere, it sounded like there was a lot of misunderstandings about whose responsibility, maintenances and how that came to be and whether that could possibly be true. And aside from just this issue at hand, looking at kind of the larger picture, I think it is, it is important to, to push a public awareness kind of campaign. I, I mean, I sat here before when we all said the same thing, whether it be about, oh, it was another sidewalk thing, it was bicycles on the sidewalk, kind of, it was any like safety kind of issue and whose responsibility is whose. And I think we can, we can do more, I think we do a pretty good job in general, but, you know, what, what goes uninspected goes forgotten, overlooked, and so, I think Mr. Myers had the, a great idea of this concept of homeowners, homeowners' responsibilities in Cottage Grove, whether it be sent out by real estate agents or whatever the case may be, but what are the options? You know, early on, I heard about local improvement districts and that being an option because I think when I first moved to my house, one of the trees was lifting up a sidewalk and it was like, hey, I think I had the same concept, they're like, why don't you guys fix this sidewalk? And then I realized that it was my responsibility and then I was a little less apt to, to jump right on it. Funny how that dichotomy works. And, and so, more education, I think, more understanding of, of that will go a long way, and then when we do want to, like collectively say, hey, we, we want to raise the standard or make things safer overall and we want to tackle that as a big project, then at least we're not fighting a, as much, a battle of misunderstandings, at least there's common, can be common language around it. So, a little investment in that, I think would go a long way. Don't have any suggestions, I guess, right now, but as to exactly how to do that, but the rest of the council supports some, something along those lines of, you know, let's, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot going forward. If there's, uh, if there's things that are going to affect people, maybe we can come out with a, an education campaign first and, and at least I want to be more conscious of that going forward.
Thank you for those comments. Any, oh.
Yeah, thank you so much, Council Fleck. I've been doing a lot of thinking about the sidewalks, I, as a lot of us have been, and we've been talking with local community members and I grew up as a child assuming that property owners were responsible for the sidewalks in front of their house. I don't know why I assumed that, I just did, and it made sense to me. I also, now being a property owner, that would be a big ticket item and as Council Urban just said, oh my gosh, now I have to pay for the sidewalk, let me rethink how big of a deal this is. It got me thinking about why we have this ordinance in place. And I was expressing my concern with Mr. Boone last week and I really appreciated the way that he explained it to me. I was wondering if, Mr. Boone, could you explain it in, the way that we, you explained it the other day when we were talking, about why the city sidewalks are the property owner's responsibility?
I, I can certainly try, I won't remember the exact words I used, but I'll give it a shot. So, this is what I've gathered from just the, you know, the research I've done on this issue. Kind of on a philosophical level, it seems that when people started putting together, you know, incorporating cities, the reasons they were doing it were effectively to allow groups of people to achieve things they could not realistically do on their own. For example, a group of people band together and say, boy, it should be nice to have water that's not coming directly out of the swamp. If we all pitch in some money, we can have clean water. And likewise, you know, if we all cleaned up what comes out of the other end of our piping system, it'd be a lot nicer than dumping it all back into that swamp. And so, the idea is, it's almost, it's like an HOA, before there were HOAs, in that it's, you know, we all come together, we decide that we're going to do certain things to make life better for the people within this, this area that sign on. And the original charters were effectively those people signing on saying, hey, we, the people who live in this little area, we want to have a city with a certain set of rules for how we're going to get along in the future. One of the things they apparently decided was worth having was a transportation network that was contiguous and sidewalks were part of that. The idea was, you know, each landowner or property owner in the city would be responsible for their own chunk of sidewalk bordering their land. My best guess is that they came, instead of doing it via tax money like we do with a lot of other stuff, I think they did it that way because it, back in the day, people were probably more likely to do their own concrete work more often than maybe they do now. And it was kind of an early attempt at doing something that, you know, almost like the way that people do graduated taxes, you know, if you have more property frontage, then you're responsible for more sidewalk than someone that has less property frontage. And since you tend to be the one that uses your sidewalk the most often, you're responsible for it. But it's also to take care of the people who cannot otherwise navigate through town, people with wheelchairs and things who really need sidewalk to exist. There's that, we're going to make sure everybody has sidewalk even if they personally don't necessarily need it or use it, maybe you've got the back of your house to the alley all the time and you never use your front walk. Nevertheless, because there are people who, for example, are blind, use canes, use wheelchairs, having that complete and contiguous, but traffic system was something that was decided, you know, by our, our forbearers back in the day, that that was like a core thing that cities should do. And that's how we kind of ended up with that today, it's just now we've largely forgotten that that's even a thing. As evidenced by this particular issue where lots and lots of people didn't know this was a thing. A lot of people think, oh, the city owns that, right? Apparently, you know, back in nineteen sixty-four, more people apparently knew that the sidewalk was their responsibility. I don't know if I've covered all the same stuff I covered when we spoke, Council Savage, but something along those lines.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot there, I appreciate it, Mr. Boone. With that being said, I'm really encouraged that we are bringing this conversation together. I think it would be good to continue how to go forward in a way that's meaningful for the city of Cottage Grove and, and these are how, this is how that process starts. So, I'm really encouraged by these conversations. So, thank you, that's what I have.
Council Urban?
Thank you, as you're talking about that, a couple of things jelled, I mean, it seems like the first question we have to ask is if we still want sidewalks. Do we, do we care as a city about having sidewalks? And if the answer to that is yes, then the next question is, who's going to pay for it and how is it going to get, you know, paid for? And should places that don't have sidewalks be mandated to put them in? Should places that have out-of-repair sidewalks, I guess, standards? Yes, we want sidewalks and then the standards for them. And then, I mean, there are options there, right? So, if the old system was to have all homeowners pay for it, then great, we go that route and can, or continue down that route, but if it's, you know, everybody says, yes, we want sidewalks, but no, we don't want homeowners to pay for it, we want everyone that uses them, including non-homeowners and, and everybody, maybe things have changed, maybe times have changed, maybe uses have changed. Then it seems like the option would be, then you just levy a, an additional tax on, whether it be property or inside the city or whatever, you put it up for a vote. And then that's how it gets decided. But, you know, under our current system, not going down that route, this is the mechanism to, to get sidewalks repaired or in place is if they're not being done, as evidenced by, well, before nineteen sixty-four, nobody decided to maintain those sidewalks and the ones that we're talking about in particular, then what other really options do we have? But it, it does leave me wishing that we could have a more expedient, you know, temperature-taking mechanism to say, do we, do we care? Do we want these? You know, how many people, who's willing to share the burden? Because that's really the second question. Do you want responsibility taken? Who do you want to take it? And I guess I'm just expressing that, you know, given that there's not a lot of full data set information to make decisions off of, we're all just left here trying to make the best decisions possible for the here and now and, and the future. But I, I'm certainly looking for some solution technologically or otherwise to be able to expediently decipher the, the will of the people, except, you know, not just taking a lot of his voices, but taking everybody's voice into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other concerns of the council? Okay, so I guess any sort of classes again. So, item nine, A, is report from the city manager.
Well, to, to just kind of continue the discussion and the, about sidewalks and everything, we have selected an engineer through ODOT for a consultant firm to do our bicycle and pedestrian plan, which is going to be setting priorities. It's going to be examining all of our, our infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians and evaluating those based on ADA, which kind of throws you, answers a little bit of your question, Council Urban, of whether we want sidewalks or not, because some of ADA says you have to have ways to allow everyone, regardless of mobility, to get to places of business or homes and generally that means you're going to have some kind of hard surface to get to those places. So, it kind of takes away some of that decision that, whether we want them or not. But they will be looking at and, and getting started in January of doing a full evaluation of all of those facilities and providing us a, a priority, how to do it. Because we cannot do all of the locations that need to either be installed or repaired and replaced at any one time. Generally, one handicap ramp properly installed now on one corner of an intersection without any land acquisition is about five thousand-plus dollars and that price continues to go up quickly as various fuels and oils or products, petroleum products increase and, and things change in the contracting world, it's probably closer to ten thousand now, but it's, it continues to increase. And so, as we look at those that need to be done, we look at sidewalks that need to be done. That's what this bicycle and pedestrian plan is going to provide for us as a priority to help us understand the, the value and importance of which ones we need to really focus on first and create us a plan to, how to move through that process. It may, it may identify some sidewalks in areas where people live and they can say, oh, look, the city's going to be coming to us in about five years or ten years to fix our sidewalks, maybe we ought to do something in the eighth year or the ninth year so that we can get it done ahead of time. So, some of that will help there. So, that's underway and we'll be moving forward, there's going to be some involvement and community discussions associated with that as part of that, so keep an eye out for that. I think we'll be coming to the council for some council representation on the advisory committee to work on that. Faye, do you know yet? I think so, yeah. So, so watch for that and probably some other public involvement as well. Also, to report, we got the grant for the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan to do a study and look at what we're doing, how are the things that we've done? The MPT and some of the changes to tiny homes and the codes, how has it helped in affordable housing and how are we doing based on our, our goals? And is there any other changes or adjustments that we need to make to, to fix that? We got the grant to do that and so, we'll be starting in January once again with that and the consultant's been selected, that's through the Department of Land Conservation and Development grant, and so, we'll be working on evaluating that as well. So, we'll be getting some council representation there too for that, so keep that, keep that in mind, so that's where we'll have that review of the MPT as a part of that package. As Council Urban mentioned, we've talked about staff, we've been visiting and we were trying to figure out how can we, how can we get the message out on some of these things? Because we hear it about sewer lines, how their sewer gets plugged and they expect us to take care of their sewer line from the, between their house and the sidewalk and that's the property owner's responsibility. Or, you know, how to do, how to call eight-one-one if you are going to dig in your yard so that items can be located. So, we, we came up with the idea and we're going to be moving forward with trying to put together a, a property owner's manual that, for the city of Cottage Grove, that'll answer those questions as well as provide input for, opportunities for our utilities to get information in there, how do you do things with them, what kind of responsibilities do property owners have and what resources may be out there as well. So, we'll be putting that together and keep an eye out for that. We're, we're going to be brainstorming in ways to get it out to everyone, get it distributed to property owners, get it distributed through real estate agencies, new people come in to just get that information shared, so looking forward to making it an interesting and intuitive little guide on, you know, what, what owners manuals type things would you need to do if you own property in the community. Last item I have is Friday is the Halloween Hoot and Nanny from three to six in Bohemia Park. Be sure to, to stop by and watch and see it. We'll have our pumpkins out there earlier in the day for judging hopefully and so, if council members want to come by earlier, probably somewhere around two or so, and judge those if they can, or they can send a proxy if you'd like to judge. I know some of you have done that in the past, sent, sent a proxy down to, to judge the pumpkins, but it should be a lot of fun. Next year, we hope we can be back downtown Main Street. Last year, this year, these are just things trying to get us through the different challenges associated with the pandemic. The route and the system will be, people will come in at a certain point in the park and walk through the park and exit, and that's trying to keep everybody moving in one direction through and collecting, collecting their Halloween trick, treats, not tricks, but treats, and enjoying that, at least getting an opportunity to get out and do that on Friday from three to six in Bohemia Park. Next year, hopefully we'll be back on Main Street and crowded and having great fun down there. Leaf pickup started today and Mother Nature helped us a little bit by blowing them around and dumping them down quickly last night. So, our crew's been out with the Dr. Seuss vacuum-looking machine, cleaning up leaves and trying to get that, and I know there were some piles, but those piles I think got spread out in the wind, and so, we'll be trying to clean up as best we can. Any help in getting piles put back together will speed the process because then the, the machine can scoop those up and get them out of the road faster than if it's, if they're spread out. So, hopefully we'll be able to continue to move forward with that. The next leaf pickup is the week of November fifteenth is when it starts, so it doesn't look like there's many left after what fell last night, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do not have a city attorney and we did not have any removed items, so we are adjourned.